I'd like to call the meeting of the Ferrisburg Planning Commission to order. Roll call, please.
Chairman Post?
Here.
Commissioner Tugel?
Here.
Commissioner Carlson?
Here.
Commissioner Hawley?
Here.
Commissioner Scholberg?
Present.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Here.
Commissioner Weber?
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 2nd meeting?
Your Honor, I believe number four, it says seconded by Weber, but she was not at the meeting.
Yeah, I have that circled too.
I don't recall who seconded that.
Well, if you look at five, I think that that was from, was that from?
Was one in here, I wanted that too.
I know, I circled it.
Some of these lines were from another one.
So number five, moved by Carlson, seconded by Hawley, to approve.
Maybe we just need to remove line four.
Yeah.
And then I'm not sure what the discussion in the middle there.
Oh, we added that to the agenda, so.
Need to remove four?
I think we have to keep four, but we have to figure out who seconded it.
If you look at five, it looks like moved by Carlson, seconded by Hawley, so I think.
That was for the minutes, though. Four is for the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, back at the recording.
I think that could have been me making the second. As amended?
So I'll move to approve the meeting minutes for January 2nd, 2025, as a matter of support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call for public comments. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Lisa Royce, 17700 Navajo. I was at the last city council meeting and I brought up the sign ordinance and lo and behold, you guys were talking about it this week. So I just wanted to reiterate what I said Monday night. I own a property in Muskegon, Grand Haven, all over the area, and we are the only ones that limit signs to two. And I believe that's against our free speech. We should, Ferrisburg should have, we had a huge election last year. There was tons of people and nobody likes the looks of them. I don't think anybody, even with people with signs in the yard, don't like the look, but sometimes it has to happen because if you have multiple people, multiple issues, you know, we need to be able to have our voice. I said Monday night, 30 days, 45 days would be, you know, at the discretion of council or the planning commission to put to council. Two to five days afterwards, I don't think they need to be around. They can have one sign in the yard year round. I'm assuming is going to stay. And I know you guys can't do content. So I did mention the other night having one sign per candidate, but apparently that probably is not going to fly. So if they want to have 27, I won't say his name, orange guy signs, go right ahead. I guess we have to live with it for a while. Hopefully never again. But the point is, is we should have the right to say what we feel. And I don't think council or the city has a right to, especially when everybody around the communities are doing the complete opposite. So I hope you guys reconsider. And I know we had, we put it on hold last year because there was enough complaints from the people in the community that apparently agreed. So I just hope we can come to a conclusion on it and follow the surrounding communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kiri Youthi and I'm from 16192 Old Orchard Drive. Yes, I'm a Spring Lake Township resident, but I happened to be notified about a topic you're going to be talking about tonight. And it's regarding to the produce stand. I just, because I don't actually grow, I'm actually not a very good gardener. So I don't actually use it quite often, but I do think it's a nice thing. And I've seen where there's been even kids who've gone and stopped and picked things up. I do understand the balance you have to face regarding to the neighbors, which I think it sounds like it's being addressed. But I do know the good it does bring to the community. And even coming from the neighbor next door here in the sense, I do really do appreciate it. And I think it's a really wonderful thing that they are doing. So I appreciate you guys listening to this and looking at everyone's viewpoints and taking it into consideration. Just a quick note regarding the sign ordinance. I've actually been bringing it up to Spring Lake Township. And so we are on the opposite end and it's crazy on our side. And I've asked them to rein it in. And so supposedly we do have language, they just need to learn how to enforce it on our side. So you will hopefully see it next time, a little more, a little less signs on the Spring Lake Township, especially when you're hitting certain corners, because it's been nuts, even just with advertisement, not even just from the candidate side, just from regular marketing people putting things out. So I have been pressing for that as well. So just so you know, that we hopefully get it cleaned up on our end too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And Craig, we'll go to the first public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. So at 7:05, we're opening the public hearing on a request filed by Home Specialists LLC to construct a deck with zero east and west line setback, a variance from zoning ordinance, section 3.130 sub 1D for parcel number 700315109002, commonly known as a boat lot, zero Lakeview Avenue.
I'm Kevin DeVester with Home Specialists, 310 Northern Drive, Northwest Grand Rapids. I represent, I'm the builder for the project, represent Chris Lutz and his desire to build. He currently has a pavers on his lot and he has a lot of grass and things growing through them. And has a desire to do it out of a deck so that he doesn't have so much grass growing through it. But if we have to have, on a 10-foot lot, if we have to have three feet on each side, he's got a pretty skinny little hallway. So it's his desire to have, at least be able to do a 10-foot deck. And as we went down the street, there are a number of them with, you know, going lot line to lot line. Even if they have multiple lots, they're fairly large and go lot line to lot line. He originally also wanted the railings around it just to kind of contain furniture and things so that it wouldn't blow around. We've removed them. He's not real happy about that. But we've talked to him about the visual aspect of it and that that was probably going to be a problem, you know, for the neighbors, that we felt like maybe the 10-foot wide deck wouldn't be, but that maybe the railings being removed would help the visual, you know, not be a problem. That's what we're looking for.
David, have they seen your report and your comments?
You've seen it, yes.
Yes.
So this will be the time to ask for public comments.
Are there further public comments on this topic?
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Okay, yeah. We'll close the public hearing then at 7:08. Okay. And we'll move to discussion of this item. Thank you. David, would you make some comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So as you know, a boat lot can be developed with certain improvements. However, those improvements need to meet setback requirements. In this case, in the zoning district, side setbacks are 10 feet. And there's also a front setback from the street right of way as well. The planning commission, however, does have the authority to modify setback requirements. But based on the ordinance, you only have that authority down to three feet. So three feet from each property line. As mentioned, this is a very narrow lot. It's only about 11 feet wide. Unfortunately, that would, with a very small deck area, about five feet. But with my reading of the ordinance, I don't believe we have the authority to waive or modify the requirement any less than three feet. Unfortunately, this would have to go to the ZBA, in my opinion, for a lesser setback or a zero setback. We did put out some early comments to the applicants with the three-foot allowance. And once I, after the public notice was out, I reviewed the application, noticed that it did not meet those requirements. So unfortunately, it's on the agenda for a hearing and I don't think we have the authority to approve anything less than three.
I was under the impression that this might have gone to ZBA before it would have come to us to ask for the waiver. I'm surprised it's here without going before the ZBA first.
Get some clarification on why this is there or not?
Sure.
Or for Craig?
Certain ordinances allow for flexibility of zoning standards at the planning commission level. So it's not uncommon to have non-variance flexibility or waiver authority that the planning commission can consider. But yes, anything less than three should go to the ZBA. And it wasn't until after this was noticed that I reviewed the full application, revised plans, and noticed that the plans were showing a zero-foot setback on each side. So when I originally reviewed it, I made notes in my comments to Craig that on the original plan, it wasn't clear what the setbacks were. We noted that anything less than three would not be allowable by the planning commission. So, but by the time we reviewed the plans, things were noticed and agenda was set. And unfortunately, I noted in the report that anything less than three goes to the ZBA. But just to answer your question, it's not uncommon for ordinances to have non-variance flexibility to a certain extent, review the special needs process. So this is one of those cases.
So would your recommendation be just take no action then and then this would get passed to the ZBA?
My recommendation would be just to deny the application and allow support to the ZBA, I guess.
Do we need to go through the denial process or do we just not take action?
I would recommend that you make a formal.
Okay.
Well, if you could make a recommendation and then make a withdrawal or see it out to the city council.
If this application gets denied and then they go to ZBA, do they have to pay a fee again to go to ZBA? You know, Craig?
There's a $150 fee.
Okay.
That pays for the publication and the mailings to the property owners of the 300 feet.
Is there, I just hate for the applicant to have to pay that again if it was not on their end, but maybe.
If they get the variance, they'll ask them to apply for approval, special needs. I think, I don't think this would need to go to the planning commission as long as the variances were secured. So the planning commission has that authority to do down to three and the ZBA has the authority to do it under three. So I think at that point, the ZBA would set the rule for the lot and it could just proceed if approved by the ZBA. But I don't think we'd have to come back.
So, may I? So you would, the best thing in the name of expediency would be for us to approve this, given that they receive a variance from the ZBA, so that as soon as they got that, they could proceed?
I'd recommend that you recommend denial. And just so that they could, I think they could either just withdraw at that point or if they didn't withdraw, they would go to the city council.
But then would they, they don't have to come back to us again, do they, after? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can't we just make a motion to send it to ZBA rather than putting a negative connotation on it that we're not in support of it?
I think the planning commission is limited to a recommendation of approval or denial or to postpone for further information. So I think just with the context behind your motion, say, deny because we just don't have the authority to do anything less than three. So I think you can give that context in a motion if it is a motion for denial.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a suitable motion that reflects, I think we're not opposed to the project, but we feel we don't have the authority to grant it and we want to direct you to the proper board that could help you with this.
I'll make that motion that we deny the approval based only on the fact that we do not have the authority to grant it and with the recommendation to proceed further with the ZBA.
Okay.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I understand you guys' limitation, but I guess I maybe don't understand why I'm here. If this wasn't the appropriate place to be, then why was it led to this spot?
I kind of agree with that a little bit. I'm struggling with them. I'm fine if they have to go to ZBA, but to pay again and go through the application, that's hard for me. I hear what you're saying.
I understand your point. We can look at it, look at it.
Yeah, because I got a answer to the homeowner here on my way home and he's going to say, what are you doing?
Do you understand about the three foot and everything?
Yeah, yeah. No, that's clear. I'm good with that. I understand.
And that's why it's got to go to ZBA?
Yeah.
Instead of us?
Yeah. No, I'm totally good with that.
I can understand why are you here compared to just going to ZBA. How did that happen, Craig?
I understand where you're coming from, so I think the city can waive that, the ZBA fee.
Okay. And do you know when that meeting is? Because this guy's kind of chomping at the bit. And I'm coming back here next month because we have another thing for him to.
March 13.
Okay. That's another month.
I'll send the application tomorrow.
Okay.
This is a different kind of application.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion. Good luck. Calling for a public hearing to consider the ordinance to amend the city code by amending chapter 154, zoning to amend section 9.120 sub D to permit accessory building and uses in the L13 Zone District. The time is 7:17. No one here to speak on that? We'll close the hearing. Close the hearing at 7:18. And open discussion to take action appropriate on this topic. Craig or David?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We realize that the zoning ordinance did not have a provision for accessory structures and buildings for the LI3 zoning district. So this is a, I don't believe that was intentional, an intentional prohibition. It just was never in the zoning ordinance and it never came up as a question. So this ordinance is very simple. It would allow for accessory buildings and structures in the same manner as LI1 and LI2 and really all other commercial and office districts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? We, good? Okay. So I would entertain a motion to amend the city code according to the language.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to recommend the city council to adapt an ordinance to amend the city code by amending chapter 154 zoning to amend section 9.120 D to permit accessory building and uses in the L1 through 3 Zone District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Two passes. So the next item is discussion and take action if appropriate to recommend to city council to adopt the Community Energy Plan. At the, at the last meeting, we had a presentation by John Kinch with Michigan Energy Options. And since that time, they have completed the, what were the draft documents. And I hope everyone has had a chance to look at the, especially the two-page summary of the plan.
So this is something the group committee has been working on about a year and a half now?
Yes.
And they've had meetings and BLP was part of these meetings and guided us on what the things they've been doing to reduce energy. And from that information, the committee decided or talked about ways that all communities could reduce their energy use and reduce the footprint. And they put some goals in there. So now a draft plan has been put together. And now each community is going to take it and recommend to their board to approve or not approve that.
How are the other communities sitting right now, Gary?
Well.
Anybody voted on it yet?
I serve on the steering committee that was in place while we were drafting the plan. And the thought is that that steering committee is moving to an inactive status as each community is hopefully going, moving to support the plan. And then we would, the three communities in the Board of Light and Power area would be working together to get a grant, to hire someone to implement the plan. And to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, I don't think Grand Haven or Grand Haven Township has voted on it yet. They're all in the same boat where.
Working through.
It's working through. So this could be a great opportunity for Ferrisburg to lead the way.
Well, Gary, I certainly appreciate the two-page. Everybody get a chance to look through all of this. And of course, we had the presentation at our last meeting.
I do have a question about the Community Energy Advisor hiring. Who? Are we looking at all the communities getting together and determining who that person would be? Would they be paid for by all of the communities served?
Regina, the thought is that all of the communities are in a cost-conscious mode right now. And the thought is that there is, there are grant funds out there. And the way it would work is one community, possibly Grand Haven, would act as the grant applicant. But it would be an application that would cover all three communities and it would not be an expense to any of the individual communities, but that the person hired would service all the communities to try to help people. You know, it's a complicated topic. There is a real concern that there's a lot of wasted money in wasting energy. And having someone who actually holds the title of Community Energy Advisor would enable each of the communities in the Board of Light and Power service area to achieve savings.
So that person would be grant funded then, that position?
Exactly. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Community Energy Plan.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the city council to adopt the Community Energy Plan. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Thank you. That takes us to the work session on the produce stand ordinance. Should the couple speak to us again before we get into the work session?
Sure is this question.
Would you care to give us an update on your, what's happened since the last meeting?
Certainly. We, a couple of weeks ago, we got a chance to sit down with Craig and go over that proposed ordinance to see where, you know, we found any issues or if there was any problems that we could see with our current operation, I guess. And with this new proposed ordinance, the biggest thing in it that we noticed was that it, it's, I believe in the updated that you guys have, it says five feet back from the public right of way. I don't have that in front of me.
This is on the new draft of the small-scale produce stand.
There's a.
It's five feet.
Okay. Because originally it was at 10. And then when we discussed it with Craig, we mentioned to him it's at two. Or we suggested two feet mainly because. I'm going to pass this around. The left line is the public right of way. Our stand is right now already at two feet behind the public right of way. 10 feet would be directly at our house. So we wouldn't even be able to have room to put a stand there. So that's why we're just saying two feet below 30 inches.
You can keep on talking.
But that was just one of the biggest things that we noticed in that updated ordinance.
Craig, David? It was my understanding, looking at these documents, that the marked up version was showing us what went into the final version. So on the point that the layer bees are raising, is it two feet, five feet, or 10 feet in the proposed?
The marked up version was the one that I updated directly after the last meeting. So that was the one that was reviewed together by Craig and the layer bills. After that meeting, I received the input from that meeting and made some edits to the requirements as well as just other cleanups I thought would benefit the ordinance. So the final version is dated January 31st. It's the clean version. I had recommended five feet. We are writing this ordinance for all properties in residential areas. This is not a proposal. So I felt that five feet was an appropriate setback for a stand of this nature and size. I think they could probably look for another location on their property that would have a deeper setback, I think on the, toward the corner, not directly right in front of the house. But again, this is just a recommendation. If you feel that two feet is sufficient, that's completely your call. There are also some fill in the blanks for the hours of operation and the months of operation. So I think they had recommended eight to eight, seven days a week, May 1st and November 1st, I believe. I have no issues with that at all. I just left those blank just so that you can make a final decision on that.
So I'm hearing two questions at the moment. The setback that's in section 1B4 on whether it's five feet or two feet and section 6E with the hours.
I had one comment.
I had one comment.
I had one comment. I had one comment where the hours. The drafts that I was thinking about putting in something that said or dusk. Because different times of the year, it's going to be dark, you know, before eight o'clock. So I don't know if we wanted to throw anything like that in or if it even matters. You know, 8:00 PM or dusk.
Comments on?
But I guess.
I think it would be harder to.
Right. I guess in the summertime, dusk is, is later, so.
But you proposed May 1st and November 1st. Was that what you, or was that what the dates were?
That was in the, the market version from, from their meeting.
Yeah.
Chairman Post? I'd be in favor of the two-foot setback so that we can fit. You're presently at two foot, right?
Yes.
That's what I was going to ask.
So that we could accommodate that for you folks. And then I'd also be in support of increasing the span of the months. Because the shut off on November 1st, November's can be a beautiful month.
It can be, yes.
It can be. And so I'd be, wouldn't be opposed to doing it December. And do you have a problem with May? Or do you want to do April?
Doesn't matter to us.
I mean, from a growing standpoint, is that?
From a growing standpoint, you know, there's a good chance that we may have some seedlings that we could put out at the stand.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that you're.
April, you know.
April would be great for putting stuff out.
The nice thing with that, it's at your discretion. So if you don't want to put stuff out in April, you don't have to. Or if you don't have stuff, you don't have to. But then at least you get that, that leeway.
Craig, how does, how does staff feel about this? The two-foot? From a precedent standpoint and everything?
A fence has to be two feet off the right of way. So if we can allow a fence, we could probably allow a stand.
Mr. Chairman, one thing that we need to remember, this is for all residential properties, not just this property. So when you're looking at the setbacks, two feet and five feet, two feet, 15 feet from side of rear properties, you can't base it on one property. It's got to be, you know, for everybody. So.
That's why I said about setting precedent.
Said if, if this was five feet, then it'd pretty much be at your front door. I mean.
And I, and I guess that, you know, the biggest thing, you know, we're willing to accommodate where that stand can go. The further it goes over into the side yard, the harder it's going to be to, you know, get people to park in the designated parking spots in the driveway. So that's just something to keep in mind as well. And with that setback as well, there are plenty, you know, even on Cecilia, there's plenty of, you know, pretty tiny front yards. Is this something that, you know, even those houses would be able to do, even if it was just a little basket with produce? We want to make this, you know, something approachable from every property owner's standpoint if they were to choose. You know, it's just the idea of sharing vegetables.
Does this home fall in the overlay district? Is that in that area?
Yes, it does.
If you can do specifics, like they do bring up, I mean, I live on Cecilia, so they bring up a good point. Like if I had to do that, I don't, it would be at my front door. So, and that whole street. I don't know if there's a way to like exempt a certain unique area.
Could we do it in that overlay district?
That's kind of where I was.
You could have varying setbacks based on, on zoning district or within the overlay, sure.
Then they would be able to continue. But then I understand what Regina's saying. You can't just make this ordinance just for them.
If, if you feel like the characteristics of the overlay don't allow for significant enough front yards and it's a little bit squeezed for space, that, that might be justification for a lesser setback. There is another location on, to the east of their, their house. I think they made a good argument, though, that is a little farther away from the parking area. So, I mean, I think there's different things at play. But I think in terms of how it affects other residential property, treating overlay district might differently, might be an idea to handle that. If you're open to two, but also concerned about how it would be, how it would affect other properties.
I'm hearing support for a two-foot setback and a, a longer months, April 1st to December 1st. And also qualifying this ordinance, or at least those setbacks, to be applicable in the overlay district. That sound correct?
Your honor, I would, I guess I would be more to just do two feet across the board. I think it just makes it more confusing. I think it makes it more work for the city to figure out who's where. If a fence can be at two feet, then I don't understand why a stand couldn't. It has, you know, dimensions that they can't go higher than. So I guess I'm, I would be in favor of just putting it at two feet across the board.
I think the same thing. Like two feet, then. I do think dusk. It's set at eight o'clock and we got people driving by when it's light out. That just kind of sets up the probability of having enforcement. I think the dusk and.
I would suggest instead of dusk, say sunset. That's, that's a specific time. Dusk is based on an angle of the sun after, after sunset.
Oh, sunset.
I actually went through this recently, so.
Yeah, you smile for some reason.
Lisa, would you like to approach the?
Yes. Zero Navajo. I guess I have an issue with, I mean, I'm all for all of this, but we have zero parking on the streets. Sure, we guys are going to park if we're going to have stands all over the town this day and at a bakery shop. That's the little thing to throw in there.
Thank you.
And we went over the parking with Craig and for, for the permit for any of these small produce stands, it'd be required that we all have two, or two parking spots off-street available. So that's, you know, that's something that we are certainly willing and able to, you know, oblige with as well, so.
Mr. Chair, that was my next question. Is your designated parking in your driveway?
Correct.
Right there. So, and then your stand is right here.
The stand is to the left of the path to the front door. Where it's currently at.
All right. So it's, it's over the left of the stone path? Okay. Right here? So they, they just kind of walk across your yard then from the designated parking? Right?
As long as we have that two feet, otherwise it's, you know, putting it in the, in the shrubs where the window, window is, so.
Anybody else want to?
I don't, yeah, I'm very familiar with that.
And is there going to be specific signage directing people to the designated parking so people aren't? Because a lot of people probably aren't familiar with the, the no parking on the street ordinance.
I mean, last year there's parks on the street.
Right. I just feel like that's got to be something that's sort of called out.
We're going to mark the driveway, say.
Yeah, if you can put something on like, because do you have a Facebook page? Yeah, if you can put something on.
Our mission statement, the first line is please park in the. So when anyone clicks on it.
Yeah. And then you'll get less complaints.
Yep.
Regina, there seemed to be more support from the board to drop the overlay district qualification. And as I, as I'm hearing it, there's support for the, going with the two-foot setback.
I still would like to see what David drew up here with five feet from the public right of way and 15 feet from the side of rear property lines. But I don't feel strongly enough about it to raise a fit, so.
Sir Chair, I have one other question. That's okay? In the original or in the, the rough draft, the language about the temporary sign, since we're going to be talking about signs later tonight anyway, too. That one originally, I think, said 16 feet. And then in the, in the final draft, it says, shall comply with section 7.7. So would that then be going from 16 square feet to six square feet? Because that's a temporary sign in a residential.
It would be going to, to whatever you end up recommending.
Right. But currently how it's written, because it's a residential, it would be one sign year round at six square feet.
I, yes.
Okay.
Fall back on what you have now until that's changed.
Okay.
And I thought it would be simpler, this, because they're all residential properties, all, you have a, you have a base number of signs, one way or the other throughout the year. One, two, four. That sign could be. Probably standard.
Does your sign fall within that?
We don't know the sign ordinance well enough.
It's, it's six square feet, so it's two, you know.
Does it say how far back from the right of way?
I think it does.
Yeah. It says five.
In the ordinance, in section 7.70.
So the sign would have to be.
But again, that, that's an issue that we'll be discussing tonight. Whatever the setback is, it will likely be different this, in this frame when the ordinance is amended. But, or you can consider that.
But as it stands right now.
This, any other accessory use.
Right.
Temporary sign provisions in, in current book or in the proposed law.
Right. I just, I noticed that, that it was written in there originally as 16 feet. So I didn't know if that was something that was important to you guys or if that's something that you guys were chatting about or. I, I don't know that we would have any power to change that because it would still be in a residential.
I, I mean, the other option would be to say, notwithstanding the requirements, notwithstanding the setback requirements of section 70, signs can be setback, temporary guard stand could be setback two feet for a temporary produce stand. So you could make an accommodation for a temporary produce stand, just acknowledging that there's a two-foot setback, if that's the way it goes through. So the, the five-foot setback or line with current temporary setback. So if you drop the produce stand setback, you could allow for one temporary sign to, to meet a lesser setback. But all other requirements would need, or all the other aspects of that sign would need to meet 7.70 or, or any changes to.
And my, my other question regarding the signing, signage too, because I, it sounds like it would be probably helpful if they had like a parking designation sign. And if we're limiting to one sign, you know, out of, outside of election season, is that, is the parking sign falling within sign ordinance? Or is that, are we allowing parking signs? Parking, I know direct, there was something about directional signs.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think you would need to, we either fall back on, on 7.70 or, or we build in some provisions that would give some flexibility based on, on this as a allowable accessory use. That, that would attract customer traffic, so.
So I, I guess that would be my question. And here somewhere, would it be wise to have something required in here that says that just to say where the parking is? That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be their one sign that they'd be allowed. You know what I mean? So it would like be a requirement to show where the designated, designated parking is. And then that wouldn't count against the sign, the one sign.
Would we not be able to just, just say for the, for the parking, instead of having like a, you know, a parking sign or a, a long display, would we be able to, you know, like hang, hang something with our, our little fruit stand logo on it, so to speak, just on our garage or near it? Something that I guess technically wouldn't even be considered a sign, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're going to want like a big parking sign in your yard. Like this is your home.
No, right, right. And, you know, anything to keep it minimal, the better. So I don't even think that I would really be looking at something the size of a sign. You know, I, I'm thinking of something a lot more smaller, but recognizable.
Yeah.
That people will be able to notice, you know?
Well, I know, I was thinking like, I just get some striping on your driveway.
Even something temporary like.
When they're doing a project, we'll have Craig send the guys over there.
It's so many regulars.
It's free produce to the neighbors.
It's the same people over and over that we see. So once people get it, I expect.
And a lot of walkers that aren't even driving.
It's a lot of walkers and biking and.
Why not put it on your main sign, parking here?
Yeah, I could do that.
And then you have one sign.
One sign.
That you could take down and put away when the year is gone and.
Currently on our, currently on our stand, it's just, you know, maybe six inch by six inch pieces of wood, you know, that we paint, you know, tomatoes on and stuff like that. So it's not like we're trying to get a banner or anything.
Yeah.
But it's classy and.
Right. We're not trying to do anything like that.
Yeah, I was just trying to eliminate, you know, complaints of.
Right.
Okay, you're out, you're, you're violating the sign ordinance or, you know what I mean? Because when you were talking about having parking signs directing people, then it kind of falls into, okay, well, now we're.
It could, it could definitely be one sign, like Regina.
Yeah, okay.
And just for reference, a, a home occupation does allow for a one, two-square-foot wall sign. But that, this isn't considered a, a home occupation. This is a, a different use that we're, that is already in the ordinance. It's processed in a different manner. So, I mean, you could add in a, a different provision for a, a parking sign, that the parking sign must be there and does not count.
Or may be there. It wouldn't have to be required, but just the option of if you, because of, you know, somebody's new and they, they don't realize that they have to park there and then, because it's kind of a, a ways over in the yard, it looks like. I'm just trying to.
We're going to move it closer.
Okay.
Sandy, it sounds like what you're talking about is maybe in, in the means of giving advice and suggesting that this not become an issue. And without, and, and unless you specifically think we should amend, make a further amendment on, on this, I'm going to suggest that we just consider this, we're giving you advice to try to have this go smoothly. Because we know this is a, a key concern, parking. Is, is that acceptable?
Absolutely. I just, I just didn't know if we wanted to allow the flexibility, if they wanted to have an additional temporary sign to designate parking. I guess that was my intent. Because as it is right now with the sign ordinance, if it doesn't change, they can only have one sign for 11 months out of the year. So they'd have to get a lot on that sign to direct where the parking is and, and all of that.
Your honor, I do think, so we're, right now I feel like we're focusing on them. If so, if we're making this for the whole city, I do wonder if maybe we want to put something in there that they're allowed one extra sign for parking if needed. Because if somebody else wants to do this and they have, they're set up differently where it's going to be further and it's not going to be applicable to put it all on one sign and just direct people, then we're kind of pigeonholing this into making it work for them. But we want this to be something that can be easily used by anyone in the city. So I would almost, we think, we put something in there where you get one sign and then maybe a one extra sign for parking. I don't know how we would write that, but.
And I feel like if we are requiring two parking places, somebody should be allowed to designate where those two parking places are if they desire.
Whether that's a sign or just maybe a, a parking berm that says parking on it. But using your word designation. David, can you fit that in there someplace?
Absolutely. So it would be a, a one sign for the purpose of directing customers to the parking area. No, I'd say no more than two square feet in size or something small that would, that would just indicate where the parking is.
I think everything else should fall in, oh, in alignment with the sign ordinance. But an additional something, sign direction of the designated parking.
Is this a temporary sign for the, or the time of operation?
It would just, I think, just something to designate where people are, where the designated parking is. If they choose, not required.
So to summarize, I think we have three amendments that we'd like to see in a, in a motion. Changing section D to two feet and section F to April to December. And Heather and Sandy's comment that there should be a, an allowance for a temporary parking designation sign.
It was April 1 to December 1. And, and it was then 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM or sunset, whichever is. Whichever is later or earlier. Well, I guess whichever is later. Whichever is later or earlier, or I guess whichever is later. Good.
What?
I think, can we just say sunset?
That's what I thought.
Cause I'm thinking, I don't know, I mean. I guess enough, yeah, I guess so.
Or.
That could be. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I just didn't wanna set anybody up where you got all the traffic going while we're doing it, especially in that neighborhood. A lot of traffic in the summer.
I think the intent is whichever comes sooner. Um, so that if it's, um, if it is dark at seven PM, that's when the suggestion is that it would be wrap things up. Can we have a motion to, um?
So, we'll, we'll make the changes that are talked about tonight, and then we'll have a public hearing on this ordinance at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I don't wanna cut anyone, anyone off, I, I just wanna men, I was summarizing, we had three specific changes. Are there, does anyone else have any other changes they'd like to suggest? Larry Bees, you're, you're good with these three changes?
Yep.
Then, um, Greg, can we close this work session?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I'd like to turn now to our work session on the sign ordinance. Uh, thank you, David, for preparing the, uh, the memorandum and, uh, questionnaire. Uh, as, as one of the homeowners who spoke on this ordinance, um, I'd, I'd just like to, uh, make a, an opening comment, and I think it echoes what, uh, Lisa Royce was saying in the audience. What I would like to see is, uh, 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 the right of, uh, of citizens in Fairiesburg to put up, um, uh, more than, more than two signs, as many signs as, uh, as they want, but limited to a specific time period relating to the primary and general elections. And what you've provided for us, David, is, uh, evidence that the village of Spring Lake and the city of Grand Haven have a thirty-day time period, and that would be less than our forty-five. So I, I like, personally, I like that, I'm gonna give everyone a chance to speak on this, but, um, on the one hand, uh, as Lisa said, it, uh, you know, it's, could be multiple signs for one candidate, but it's, it's an individual, uh, homeowner's opportunity to try to, um, uh, educate the public on who's running. Uh, and on the other hand, um, going with thirty days instead of forty-five days is also a nod toward uh, another feeling that campaign signs are just as obnoxious as any others, any other yard signs. So I think that's, I, I, I think you've pointed this in a good direction, David, but I'd like to turn it open to the, the whole commission for comments.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't like this to begin with. I thought during an election, if you've got three council seats up, you ought to be able to put up three signs. So I totally agree with a month before an election, and I would give people seven days after to go collect. You think five? Cause not everybody has the.
Yeah.
I just want to ma- make sure that people have a chance to get out there and get them. And believe it or not, I took some of mine one time to a beekeeper, so you know, there are places that you can propose that. Yeah, see, so there are ways to, if you, you might need a week to find the guy that needs those signs. But in any case, I do think that, uh, we need to allow people to have as many signs as, as you want for that period of time. We don't wanna have signs everywhere all year round, but that's, that's your right to free speech, I agree.
Mr. Chair, um, certainly with, uh, larger campaigns, the seven-day window after the election is important. And it would be, and it also helps larger campaigns as well, uh, to know that we're consistent with the neighboring communities. So I'd be in favor of the thirty days, seven days after and unlimited.
I'll second that, that's, yeah, I'd like the consistency with neighboring communities.
David, that, I think those were the, the main points, uh, uh, the reason why this was on the topic was because, uh, several, several people came before council and asked that, uh, council waive enforcement of the sign ordinance uh, during the election period last year. So, from my point of view, if we made those two changes, that would, um, address the reason why it was being brought up here today.
Mr. Chair, how, how about sign, uh, sign size? And, and God forbid lights. On my field of flamingos, yeah. Pink flamingos.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I think everything on page three, I think we should just confirm, uh, the, the setbacks, the size and the height. Do we wanna be just hands-off during that thirty plus seven daytime period, or do we want to, uh, have some order in that time? Um, in, in any case, it's gonna be difficult enforcement, a lot of signs out, a lot of people be participating in this, so it's, the one, one, one perspective could be just to, just to say hands-off as long as it's not in a public right-of-way, or, or in a clear sight line at an intersection, and just, uh, those thirty-seven days of, of the year, maybe one, for the once a year, um, hands-off. Restrictions on the size of those signs within the election season.
David, I have a question for you, and, um, are flags considered signs?
Um, well, you're going to have, um, I believe a different set of requirements for flags.
While you're looking that up, David, Lisa, would you like to address this?
This past year, and I have a house in Spring Lake Village, right on the corner of Lake and Savage, and everybody likes using my house, cause it's very visible, but I can't vote there, so, and people I let use it. And this year, a lot of them from Spring Lake, because there was so many people, a lot of them were running together, and they had a little bit bigger sign, but they had four different candidates on them. They had the four different candidates on one side, it wasn't overly big, but I think they do a little bit bigger in the village. Um, I mean, I used to fight with Kathleen Kennedy about signs for years in Spring Lake Township and Fairiesburg. I mean, they used a size of a semi-truck one time, and I had my little sign there, and you know, y- you can't have a bigger political vote than somebody else, and that's why when I brought it up, like somebody that owns a commercial lot shouldn't be, be able to have a bigger sign, just because they have a bigger s- yard than a residential in a small, y- y- do you know what I'm saying? Cause for a while there, if you had a larger lot, you could have a bigger sign. And then we got ran into trouble there in Spring Lake Township way back when, and then big money buys big signs was what my sign said. So, I mean, i- i- it, it, it's really, I mean, nobody likes it, I'm kinda surprised there wasn't more signs out last year than there was. And certain places had tons of them, certain areas had none. I mean, I've seen what she was talking about in corners and curves and stuff, and whoever owns the property can have signs out, I mean, that is your right for free speech, whether you like it or not.
Thank you.
I just, I just, I would do a maximum sign, but, I mean, if people wanna put three or four names on a sign, cause they're running, that's what they.
Thank you.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with all the setbacks and such, you have to have a front setback of five feet from the right-of-way. I think those, those should remain the same, you shouldn't be able to put signs in the public right-of-way. And I don't have a problem with, um, I don't think we need to have big giant banners in community, you know, residential communities either, so I, I'm fine with just keeping the signs the same size as they are now, most of the setbacks as well. Because I've known that there have been people that have put signs in the public right-of-way, and that's, that's not a lot. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Put them.
Uh, Lisa, um, please speak at the mo- at the podium if you're gonna speak, it's, it's hard for people watching to, to hear you. Regina, you were speaking in favor of five-foot setbacks from the front, I, I'd like to speak in favor of, uh, two-foot side setbacks. One of the gentlemen who spoke, uh, last fall, um, lives on North Shore Drive, and, um, their, uh, homes are with the driveways, there's just a little berm between each house. And, uh, it's really, um, many, many homes along North Shore Drive have to put their signs two feet away from their neighbor's signs, whether they're voting the same way or not. So, that's, uh, I'm hearing support for a five-foot from the street right-of-way, David, and, um, and I'm speaking in favor of, uh, two-foot side setbacks. Do, do you have the dimensions of the current, um, how big the signs can be currently?
Yes. Uh, so that is, uh, so the, in residential districts, um, uh, each sign is limited to six square feet and six feet in height, five feet from the right-of-way and fifteen feet from side property line. So a, a, a two-by-three-foot sign is, is your standard temporary sign based on the current one.
Regina was offering support for, um, not opening it up into large signs in residential neighborhoods.
We'll reference that, that map there is, is, uh, that's a twenty-four by thirty-six poster board, that's a six-foot.
That would be compliant?
That, yes, that's a six-foot, uh, poster board there, so, six square foot. So I, actually, that's probably larger than most of the standard political signs, so. A little extra wiggle of them.
But it's certainly not as big as like the banner that I had.
Mm-hmm.
Round town.
Uh, to answer your question on flags, uh, we actually went through a process, Craig, I think it was twenty-twenty-two, and, um, so we went through an entire, uh, we, we did prepare zoning ordinance text amendment, uh, regulating flags, uh, that was not passed by council. So we, we have no reference to flags in the, uh, it does say that, uh, flags fall under banner signs, per the definition, but there's no regulations. So, when, when there's not, when the ordinance is silent to something, it's technically not allowed, but I think it's more something that we did recognize that was missing from the ordinance, but, uh, it just, it wasn't passed when we did propose version of a sign, of a flag ordinance.
Remember that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I would probably treat them similar to the temporary guard signs. Terms of, uh.
Richard, were you on council when this, uh, was not taken up, and do you know why it was taken up?
There was a problem between, like, I fly flags at my home on a flag pole, but we have people that fly flags with them thumbtacked onto their decks. I remember talking about that, that that, is that a sign, or is that a flag? Craig, do you recall at all?
Yeah, there was some conversation at the city council level about not regulating flags, that they wanna, people wanna be able to do with their own the flags.
How long ago was this brought up, the flag ordinance?
Three years ago.
Yeah.
About three years.
Two or three years.
Would it be, would we want to look at it again, or, or leave it alone?
I think we should.
Issue with it, really.
A, a, a flag is not a sign, I mean, they're different things, so, are people talking about having like a Trump flag up or something and calling that a sign? Or a, you know, some other kind of flag? I, I don't, I don't think, I don't see why we would be concerned about that, I don't think we oughta dip into that can of worms again.
I agree with you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, we haven't had issues.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if we do that, just as a part of this, or, or, they just wanna strike the definition of, uh, we, it's, we have a banner sign definition, but no regulations.
Banner is not a flag.
Flags and pennants, so if we just take it out, that would not, uh, cause my, my issue is if you don't want to have any regulations concerning flags, remove re- all reference to flags in article seven, just so there's, so that you're making a distinction that a flag is not a sign. And if you ever want to regulate flags for some reason, we, we can, we can look at that old ordinance if you like, but, um, uh, I, so I, I recommend that we strike, uh, definition seven twenty D, uh, just as a part of this process.
I think I, I'm satisfied with, uh, the discussion that we've had, and we've, we've given you direction on the, um, thirty-day, seven-day, um, election period, um, and the, um, confirming the five, five-feet front setbacks and the two-feet side setbacks, and, uh, clarifying that, uh, signs, excuse me, uh, flags are not signs, or just removing the references to, uh, flags. Any other comments before we close this work session? Okay, thank you.
So, we'll draft an ordinance up, and then have a public hearing at the next meeting on this.
Great, great, thank you, Greg. It's a time for a second call for public comments. Seeing none, we'll close then.
Nope, we've got one.
I'm sorry.
Hi, Carrie Youth again, one-six-one-nine-two, Old Orchard Drive. Um, I just had a quick question, so, learning a lot of information here, which is really nice, um, I go to a lot of the Spring Lake Township meetings, and I have yet to hear anything about the community ener- energy plan, and I was looking it up, uh, as you guys were talking. Do you know if the township of Spring Lake or the village of Spring Lake has partnered, or has they been approached to partner within this plan before?
They were approached and, uh, and declined.
Did they say why?
There was a feeling that, um, um, the Board of Light and Power, uh, did not fully encompass, um, uh, Spring Lake and, and Spring Lake Township, it was tangential, but, um, you know, as someone that wanted them to participate, I can't really ex- I don't, I can just say they were asked.
Okay.
And they declined, but they will, they will be, um, all, every, every homeowner in the Board of Light and Power area will be encouraged to participate, whether or not their, uh, their governments, um, chose to participate.
Oh, okay. Is there somewhere I can get the information, or is that something Mr. Bessinger could email me, or?
You can take those.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
The township has a board meeting on Monday night, and I'll just ask that question there, and just see what they have to say.
Wonderful.
So thank you.
It's also online, I think, I think this whole, isn't this thing on, um?
I couldn't pull much up, cause the internet wasn't as strong, so, thank you. Well, yeah, I'd definitely take a look there, and if they need to, I can always at least email them that link too, so I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Please feel free to call me if you have any que- questions, I can help put you in touch with.
Okay, thank you.
People who can answer questions for you.
Thank you, appreciate that, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Closing, closing public comment, uh, going to zoning administrator's report, don't report. Uh, chair's report, um, thank you, everyone, for being, uh, tolerant of, of me and my new role, I'm try not to make too many mistakes, and I, I'm, I'm finding it, uh, interesting, you, it's hard to look left and, and be right, and, oh, always tell who's got their hand up, so. Member? Members' reports?
No report. No report, thank you for being our chair.
Thank you for being our chair, you did good.
No reports.
I, I couldn't be happier, Gary, with you. All this, Greg, my heart, I knew you. On a fantastic meeting, and very gracious.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No report.
Greg, can we confirm the date of the next meeting?
March sixth.
March sixth. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like we need to say, but Roger Jonas, if you're listening, we miss you too.
Good one.
He might be mad about our sign ordinance.
Continuity is so important, you know, from us.
Thank you.